Good evening. The August 8th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Herakakis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nuzma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sufferedin. Councilmember Revel.
Here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared now to do our work. The agenda begins with my public announcements and proclamations, of which you'll be pleased to hear there are none. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I wanted to introduce Hitesh, our CFO, who would like to introduce an important staff member.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yeah, I'm thrilled to introduce Clayton Black, who is our new budget manager. Today is his first day, and he comes from the village of Schaumburg with a lot of experience, almost just seven years of experience, working with the annual operating budgets as well as the capital budgets. So we are really happy. He's grew in Southern Illinois and an MPA Masters in Public Administration from the Northern Illinois. So good experience, good education, and we are really happy to have him when we are already kind of in the, what do I call, a starting phase of our 2023 budget process.
Do you want to say anything, Clayton?
Mayor, councilmember, nice to meet you all. Excited to be a member of the team. Hitesh kind of covered the introduction, but I worked for the village of Schaumburg for seven years, working on their annual budget and capital improvement plan. Similar-sized community as Evanston, but certainly Evanston's quite a bit more complex, much bigger budget, but that's what has me excited to be here and excited to take it on. So look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Clayton. I think I speak for everyone. I say we're ecstatic to have you onboard and very much looking forward to working with you. So welcome and thanks for all the good work we're going to do together.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Reed.
I just want to add my voice to the welcome as well. Welcome. You're filling some very big shoes. Kate Lewis-Laken was wonderful, and I'm sure you'll be just as wonderful. So welcome to the city and looking forward to working with you to make our city finances even tighter and stronger for the taxpayers.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the City Clerk.
I only got one email public comment from Kathy Rosbenda, just thanking City Council for the direction that they went with the city manager search, and that's in your inbox for you to read the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to public comment. This evening, there are around 15 people seeking to give public comments, and so each will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, of whom there's only one, Ray Friedman.
Good evening. Where's everybody at tonight? Well, good evening, Mayor Biss, councilmembers, interim city manager Luke Stowe and city clerk Mendoza. Thank you once again, Mayor Biss, for last, actually, it was a week and a half ago, town hall and roundtable afterwards. I'm guessing that you based your decision that Carol Mitten was not a good fit for Evanston, based on public input and the results from the town hall and roundtable discussions. We would like to get your feedback on this candidate and what will be the next steps moving forward. New search firm? When will the search begin? And hopefully, you will bring in the residents in the discussion much earlier into the process. You know, things are much more efficient and productive if we all work together. Once again, thanks to Luke Stowe as acting interim manager. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget. Last year's budget was $293 million. This year, it's $360 million. We did receive $43 million in ARPA funds, and you did approve $10 million in general obligation bonds the first two weeks of this year. Why was that? After we just increased the budget by $67 million. A5 for $450,000 to repave several tennis courts, which I'm sure is needed, but you're using GO bonds. Why are you using GO bonds here? This will raise our debt service by how much? How much is our debt service payments per month right now? And how much is our total debt from GO bonds right now? I believe it's between $200 and $300 million. When I moved here six years ago, general bond debt was about $100 million. A8 is using $41,485 in TIF funds for community engagement. We have over 800 employees plus approximately 200 volunteers here in Evanston. Isn't that enough people to get public input? With 40 to 50 boards, commissions, committees, subcommittees, sorry. We would hope that you'd have access to plenty of community members for engagement and save the taxpayers $41,485.
15 seconds.
A14, can I ask how many people are speaking at public comment tonight?
I told you, about 15.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like A14, sounds like a good program, receives HSIP funding, but why are we using $33,000 in GO bonds? More GO bond debt, why? Lastly, R1 is asking to allocate, just three more sentences, thank you, is asking to allocate additional funds in the amount of $3,450,000 from the reparations account.
Thank you very much.
Where is this money coming from, the $3.5 million? Would you please tell us how much money is currently in this reparations account? We're not asking how much money was made from the dispensary only. What is the current balance in the reparations account? Thank you very much.
We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, of whom there's also just one this evening, and that is Claire McFarland, who is additionally a member of the city's reparations committee.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Mayor Biss said, my name is Claire McFarland, and I'm a member of Evanston's reparations committee. On the agenda tonight, you will be considering a recommendation, considering a resolution to release more funds for our housing restoration program. I probably don't, I'm sure I don't need to remind you of Evanston's historic position as being the first municipality to distribute reparations in America. This council approved in November 2019 the reparations program, and with the hard work and vision of Evanstonians, they developed the housing restoration program. The committee worked on implementation, and our first distribution happened this past January. The council had approved $400,000, and this, the funds come from, to answer the previous gentleman's question, from the very beginning, all the funds were to come and did come from the cannabis tax. The additional that we're asking you to consider is our committee in the last meeting voted to request $3,450,000 be authorized to be released for the housing reparations program. It's not coming from a different source, still from that cannabis tax that was set aside, so that's not a different authorization. It's simply that the $400,000 that was initially authorized to be released has already been distributed. I signed up for public comment tonight just to give you some personal context in considering the committee's recommendation. Under the distribution scheme that was put together by the committee, the ancestors are prioritized. Those are our very, they've already, the applications have already come in, these are the people who already been approved, these are our oldest people, our oldest Evanstonians who would qualify for a distribution under the housing program. Again, very proud to have done the first 16, but these people, I mention their age because they can't wait. Just to mention very sadly, between November, when the applications came in, and January, when we were able to make the first distribution, we lost four ancestors. So the committee has, this came to the committee, and we were all very enthusiastic to come forward with this, so that as soon as the funds come in, we can release to these ancestors. We can release to, they've already been approved, the order has already been established and made public, so that we can release these funds. So hopefully, these people can enjoy the distributions while they're here. We find it quite critical, particularly because of the age group that we're serving. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the in-person portion of our public comment for the evening. We now move to those who signed up to speak on Zoom. The first speaker will be Mary Rozinski, who will be followed by Leslie Shad, and then Linda Del Bosque. Is Ms. Rozinski in the Zoom? If not, we'll perhaps come back to her later. In that case, the next speaker will be Leslie Shad, who will be followed by Linda Del Bosque, and then Annette Prince.
Thank you so much. I just am speaking on behalf of bird-friendly Evanston, and Citizens Greener Evanston, and Natural Habitat Evanston, all of which are in strong support of your item A20, which is to create a bird-friendly ordinance in Evanston. I just want to mention a couple of things. The first thing is just that cities across the country are recognizing the need for bird-friendly ordinances as biodiversity is declining, and songbirds in particular, we're losing them at 5% per year. So San Francisco, Toronto, New York City, Chicago, a couple of years ago, Madison, Wisconsin, Portland, Oregon, have all created bird-friendly ordinances. This one in Evanston in particular follows the Chicago ordinance very closely, and since 2014, my second point is just to mention that we have been, as bird-friendly Evanston, working with Evanston developers throughout this whole time and gotten agreements from them to make modifications to their designs and to incorporate materials that include bird-friendly. There are many buildings, Albion, the YWCA has bird-friendly steps, 1815 Ridge, the senior housing building, and in addition to that, buildings that are currently awaiting approval, 1621 Chicago, the Marion Building has said it would be lead-friendly, North Light Theater is doing, has said it's doing bird-friendly. But the reason we need an ordinance is because whatever the commitments are, for no fault of the developers, really, some of them, some of them, you know, lose track of it or may, you know, neglect to implement bird-friendly steps, but some of them also just are in cost pressures and give up bird-friendly. So we need some way of holding their commitments through to the end, basically. So anyway, thank you so much for your attention, and I hope you'll pass the Evanston bird-friendly ordinance. Thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Del Bosque, who will be followed by Annette Prince, and then Leslie Williams.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Biss, thank you, councilmembers. I just need to know, who do I contact regarding the business development economic department? And the reason why is this September is Illinois, well, it's National Hispanic Business Month, and I'm working coordinates only with the state, but also with our county, and we're trying to establish a relationship and highlight our Latino businesses. And I've reached out to Paul and Kate in the department with no return of email. Who would be able to direct me better in that department? I'm hoping to lean on the councilmembers or yourself, Mayor Biss. So will one of you email me? Who would be my person of contact?
You can always email me. You can email your councilmember, you can email the city manager, and either way, the communication will be routed to the proper place.
Okay, so I did copy you an email, so I will send another email then this evening. Thank you, Mayor Biss.
Thank you. The next speaker is Annette Prince, who will be followed by Leslie Williams, and then Mike Fasilco. Is Annette Prince?
This is Leslie Shad. She is not available. I just wanted to mention Annette Prince has had to drop off.
Understood. Thank you very much. In that case, the next speaker is Leslie Williams, who will be followed by Mike Fasilco, and then Betty Sue Esther.
Thank you so much, Mayor Biss and councilmembers, and congratulations to the new interim city manager, Luke Stowe. As a former city employee and manager, I know that there are specific guidelines for filling positions, especially department heads. There are established processes for deciding on credentials required, whether or not to post a job internally or do an external search, whether to advertise locally or nationally. Though these guidelines may sometimes feel cumbersome or inefficient, they ensure the positions are filled ethically without cronyism and equitably, meaning the candidates from marginalized backgrounds get a fair shot. Yet, there's been absolutely zero consistency about the selection process for the city manager, the most important position in our city government. Every search has had different rules: single town hall or all finalists together, one staff panel or two, resident panels are only stakeholders. There's not even consistency over where the position has been posted. Racial equity keeps disappearing from the job description, and it is disturbing that the mayor and council continue to treat such a vital element as an afterthought. Luke Stowe is a trustworthy, collaborative, and well-respected member of the city team and an excellent interim. If Stowe is willing, I would suggest appointing him to a short-term contract as city manager while the council takes time to decide what qualifications are truly required for this position and develops a solid city manager selection plan that would avoid the missteps of the last few searches. I hope and trust that all vacant city positions, including the upcoming one of police chief, will be conducted in an open and above-board manner, prioritizing racial justice with job descriptions and requirements posted publicly as opposed to through closed-door, behind-the-scenes negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Fasilco, who will be followed by Betty Sue Esther, and then Tina Payton.
Thank you very much. So a couple of months back, council and the mayor officially declared a climate emergency. Since then, it's been silent and back to the daily routine. Tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars are approved, you know, at every council meeting, willy-nilly, for non-urgent, non-emergency matters, matters that gobble up the budget. I wrote to everybody on the council about an article in the Tribune about sewage spread as fertilizer in Chicago-area farmlands containing toxic chemicals, PFASs, and no response from anyone at the council. This goes into our food chain, it goes into food that feeds animals, humans. Asked if anybody at the city could do more to ask the MWRD to stop that practice, again, silence, silence from the MWRD. They say it's approved by the EPA. Well, 10 years ago, I asked about lead in pipes, in our water pipes. It took 10 years for somebody to decide that was urgent. We spent, you know, and finding, we're putting something called Garland 4, a pesticide, to stunt the growth of plant life along the lake edge because some local neighbors who, their view was blocked of the water. So they asked the city, and the city's cutting down those things and putting this flammable toxic chemical along the lakefront, which is supposed to stay out of the earth and is supposed to stay out of the water. But we go ahead and do that. We're approving, again, three new vehicles, and I missed the discussion about this at APW, but three not-electric vehicles that'll be in our fleet for decades to come. The big issue with climate change is really two words, you know, fossil fuels, got to stop burning them in the bills list. This month alone, between heating fuel and fuel for cars and vehicles, et cetera, and it's summer, so the bills, so the heating.
15 seconds.
The heating bill is low, but it's still $72,000 this year, and by my estimate, a million dollars over the course of a year, burning fossil fuels, and yet, we keep finding money to spend on $450,000 on tennis courts.
Thank you very much.
No MBE, WBE. It's really a shame that we don't take the issues.
Thank you very much.
And I wish Mr. Nuzma would lift his support.
Thank you very much for your comment. The next speaker is Betty Sue Esther, who will be followed by Tina Payton, and then Jonah Karsh.
Good evening, everyone. I was sitting here waiting for the meeting to start and got a call about that the chief of police, new chief of police, will probably be hired this week, since Chief Edison has been interviewing and going around, lighting and talking to people about being the chief. So he has been hitting that up, and when I thought that that was a process that was supposed to be done by the city manager. That is concerning because the equity that Leslie Williams talked about, we won't have that if this is true. We won't have, you know, how many black candidates will there be in this interview process? How many Hispanic? How many Asian? If we are doing this internally, then we are closing out the opportunity for people of color and lots of minority to apply for the job, which they need to. So I hope that we are not going to have a interview process that happen this week. It should be like when we hired Chief Cook. We did have a small, there was community involvement in that process, and in the interviewing of the police chief before Edison, because he just came in, nobody knew how he got here. So the community needs to be involved, so that we will get someone that we can trust. So I hope that it is a rumor, and this is not going to happen, and that the process will follow our guidelines for hiring in the human service and also the city code for the city for the chief of police. Thank you. But I would like to know, is it happening? So if you could do a press release and let the community know, yes, this is happening, and we are sorry we didn't let you know beforehand, or no, this is not happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Tina Payton, who will be followed by Jonah Karsh, and then Priscilla Giles.
Hi, good evening. I believe that all meetings, city meetings, should be on Zoom, and some people, I was sick a few times, and I could not come in person, and it's very important that everyone has access to the meetings. I've also been on meetings where people didn't let me into the meeting, and there should be some person. Luke Stowe used to be helpful with putting people in touch with meetings if they weren't able to get in. Obviously, he's interim city manager, and that's not his job. This needs to be enforced, because we do not have equity during these meetings. Also, reparations is not currently on Zoom, and a lot of seniors, who this is supposed to be for, are not able to get to the meeting, and it should be on Zoom. No money should be approved for the reparations until the money that's already collected has been reported, income and expenses. Only receiving $400,000 in two and a half years is very absurd, when the weed store has expanded and billions of dollars in Illinois have been distributed. Chair Braithwaite has stepped down, Attorney Cummings is out on leave, and I heard him say at a meeting about a month ago that he found a way for cash payments. And he said that to Carla Sutton, and I was sitting next to him. Therefore, this should be open again for the application for cash payments. Robin Rue Simmons should not be on the chair as chair. She is a consultant and makes money for consulting. Alderman Burns is growing weed, and he should not, this is a conflict of interest also. CIPA should not be involved at all. They have nothing to do with reparations, and this sounds like a scam for nonprofits. The money should not be held in the Evanston Community Foundation, and it should be held in an interest-bearing account at a major bank. A third party should be involved, and what happens to the people that got picked and aren't buying a house and don't have a house? Also, I want to briefly discuss about the A8. We do not need any programming at a person hired for Fleetwood and Gibbs Morrison.
15 seconds.
You have a director that does this kind of work. How much money? I would like an accounting, how much money have you already put into Gibbs Morrison, formerly Blue Co., and you gave grants to the restaurants, a recording studio, and remodeling?
Time.
And A18, A15, you're talking about tearing down Fleetwood, possibly.
Thank you very much.
All these need to be discussed at outright meetings with the community. Black Lives Matter, and not just the chosen few. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jonah Karsh, who will be followed by Priscilla Giles, and then Carla Sutton.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Jonah Karsh. I live in the 3rd Ward. I'm calling tonight to thank you for choosing not to go forward with Carol Mitten as city manager. I'm happy that the community and staff input made it clear to you that she's not the right fit for Evanston. I read in the roundtable this afternoon that Luke Stowe will be interviewed for permanent city manager tomorrow, and that there is an additional city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday. With this superfast timeline in mind, I'm concerned about the possibility that council intends to hire a permanent city manager like Luke Stowe without a town hall like we had for every other candidate. My comments, which follow, assume, perhaps wrongly, that this is your intended course of action. I support Luke Stowe on an interim basis. He's a loyal employee to the city who remains apolitical. Those are good qualities for an interim role, and I support him being considered as an option among other candidates for permanent city manager. And I understand the sense of urgency that council feels. We have important vacancies to fill in the city, and the first two searches were not the fault of the council. But in the latest search, rather than continuing to interview candidates until they found someone they were confident was the right fit, the city council put forward a candidate with documented issues on racial equity, and both staff and residents spoke to those issues, causing the council to ultimately, predictably, decide that she wouldn't be the right fit for Evanston. I'm urging you not to make this mistake again. Rushing to fill the position with someone who you are not confident checks the boxes that are required. that are required for the position will lead to inadequate governance in the long term, the wrong people filling those vacancies that you're concerned about. For example, imagine a police chief who doesn't support the work of the reimagining Public Safety Committee, and yet another city manager search before too long. The community and the mayor in his July town hall have consistently named the top three qualities needed in a city manager: anti-racist bona fides, communicativeness, and transparency. I'm wondering what the council knows about Luke Stowe's know-how for anti-racist city governance. And as for transparency, if the council is afraid that their candidate will face tough questions from the community in a town hall, or the candidate themselves is afraid, they should know that those tough questions will continue when the candidate is city manager, and that if they aren't capable of answering those questions in a town hall setting, they are unlikely to have the support they need to do their job well. Anyone who is hired should at minimum go through the same process as everybody else has. The lesson of Carol Mitten's failure isn't that town halls will ruin qualified candidates. It's that you shouldn't put forward candidates that you're not fully confident in. I believe that this council understands the values of Evanston, and those values must be the top priority for any city manager candidate, more important than time pressure. And then in the time that I have left, I want to talk on another subject, which is just that I'm thrilled that the Inflation Reduction Act has passed the Senate this week and appears to be on the way to President Biden's desk--
Fifteen seconds.
--passed the House. And I would hope that the city explores the grants, tax credits, cheaper deals, et cetera, and all the things that will be available through this really transformative legislation that can help speed up our CARP process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Priscilla Giles, who will be followed by Carla Sutton. Is Ms. Giles in the Zoom?
Sorry.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This spring and summer is like the week between Christmas and New Year's for slaves when they ate well and received new clothes. And New Year's Day was when the families were separated and sold. Although the celebrations this summer and spring were diverse and entertaining, the poor and homeless are about to feel the brunt of these celebrations. Money spent for fun would best have been spent on permanent, low-cost housing in Evanston. Now, fun money will go for consultants to decide what programs and activities will be decided for Gibbs Morrison and Family Focus or Fleetwood Jordan. When both or all of them have programs in progress and residents already know what they want and need, why not listen to real residents and allow citizens to know what is about to happen to really understand what's going to happen to the city of Evanston, especially Fleetwood Jordan, new police chief and the city manager? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carla Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor Bess, interim city council manager, Luke Stowe, and city council members. I first want to take a brief statement to agree with the previous speakers about my concerns about what you're considering this evening. First, I want to address Fleetwood Jordan. And I don't think there should be any discussion about destroying a building in the 5th Ward that has been historically utilized by black residents to see another Y, to see another community hospital, to see another school disappear. So please remove that from your discussion. Secondly, I agree with the previous comments. Why are you hiring a consultant when you have staff that makes six figures sitting there who could walk four or five blocks over to Fleetwood Jordan and find out what the citizens actually want? I do not want to see any more green space eliminated at the expense of the residents of the 5th Ward. Secondly, I want to agree with Ray and Mrs. Attorney McFarland about the distribution of ancestors. As of today, one of the persons who was approved for ancestor distribution has passed. Arthur Sutton died yesterday. And now, that's one other person. Because of your deliberations and because of your not getting these funds distributed, many of the ancestors have been adversely affected, and five have already died. I think this is a disgrace, and whatever commitment the city made to make these payments, they should fulfill it. Also, I want to agree with Ray and Mr. Velasco that we need more transparency in these discussions, and that A8 and A15 should be removed from consideration and discussion on voting this evening. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. The person who did not respond when called on is Mary Rosinsky. Is Ms. Rosinsky in the Zoom now to give public comment? Seems not. In that case, our public comment is concluded for the evening, and we move now to special orders of business, beginning with SP1, which will be a presentation, I believe, from Mr. DeSai.
Okay, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So what I'm going to do is just go through the media financial presentation as we start the process of '23 budget, how we are doing in the current year. And let's just, yeah. So, I mean, it's pretty good, if you ask me. Revenues are pretty stable, pretty strong. If you look at the year-to-date revenues, at 62% of the budget, one of the reasons is mainly higher because of the first installment of property tax, which is 55. But it's still, and I'll go into the details, that expenses are 48%, so right at the kind of target of 50%, netting the $16 million. And fund balance is around $47 million, roughly. This is the unaudited number, subject to change, so I don't want to put too much emphasis on that as of now. General fund revenues trending high. Athletic tax, because of the football games and we got some money. Natural gas, utility tax, income tax, 86% of the budget at six months, yeah. We're doing pretty good. Real estate transfer tax, personal property replacement tax. I think the state government sent us the memo that, okay, you will get some substantial amount of personal property replacement tax money, and that's why we are a lot higher. Obviously, it doesn't say that we would get the same amount in the next year. And amusement tax, streaming services, which was introduced a couple of years back. We are doing pretty good in the streaming services, and all this kind of, you know, trending high, helping the general fund to a healthy situation. Some of those revenues more close to the around 50% on track. Sales tax, home rule sales tax, use tax, 55, 56%. Building permits at 69, which is higher. But again, it's more seasonal. This is like better than last three, four months, we would have, yeah, very little, you know? Liquor tax at 58%, parking tickets 59, and utility tax at 59. So you would see all those major revenues, you know, trending higher. What is trending lower? Telecommunication tax, as the people, more and more people get rid of the landlines, you know? And so recreation program fees, it's 46%. I think still we have some staff shortage, and the programs are not to the full pre-COVID levels, instructions and whatnot. And obviously, we might have a better number after, I think, a full summer, you know? Once we have-- property taxes, and I can talk about that later on. That first installment we received, but the second installment looks like delayed four to six months. Even the Cook County sent out the email to all the taxing bodies about the short-term financing. So it looks like that could be a delayed four to six months. Obviously, Evanston is not qualified because they're, one of the eligibility is that your community's rating should be one notch lower than the Cook County. And obviously, we are a couple of notch higher than Cook County. So obviously, we are not one of the eligible communities. And motor fuel tax, still like a hybrid mode for so many employers, employees. So not many people, you know, whereas we get the tax based on the gas used. And these are the revenues. So sometimes, yeah, I mean, when I talk about the percentage, I thought, okay, let me just put in the numbers, too, you know, how we are doing. Property tax, you would see that at around 54%. Use tax, 1.3%. Sales tax, total basic and home rule, roughly $10 million. Income tax, $7.5 million out of $8.8 million budget. So we are doing pretty good there. Some of the other revenues, too, and you would notice the Evanston motor fuel at 42% at $423,000. Real estate transfer tax at 69%. Telecommunication at 46, amusement 78, and some of the other things. Strength: revenues tied to economic activity. Sales tax, like that, use tax, anything, you know, tied into the, except the, what do you call, motor fuel tax. We are doing pretty good, on track, above target, or even a lot higher than that. Income tax, obviously, is trending too high. High building permits and real estate activity. And expenses, that's the other side, holding steady as of June, you know, at 48% to the budget. Weakness: uncertainty about the second installment of property tax. And what should we do? And this is where, mainly when council could consider, we have a budget and finance where this thing, I'm going to bring it up, whether to use the line of credit, because like we have a debt service coming up, and we have a deficit of $5 million if we don't get the money by December 1st, when we have to make the principal payment and interest. And that's the one thing, along with some of the other funds. Yes, I have a kind of, I can move the money internally within funds, but that's the kind of discussion I think I would like more at the budget and finance, and then finally come back to the council to have a kind of, some kind of a direction there. And certain activities, revenue's still low, motor fuel tax, recreation program fees. Police and fire overtime, right now for 2022, police is around 44 and fire 54. So they're tracking pretty good. Waterfront operating, so we even cover some of the big, you know, the enterprise funds, waterfront, 44% of the operating budget, overall 21%. And when I say overall means it includes the bond revenue and the capital expenditure, which would come later in the part. And even right now, the discussion last month at the finance and budget, well, most members felt that, okay, we don't need to use the GO bonds, and we should explore the option of line of credit, which I'm working with the local banks. Expenses, same thing. We have budgeted expense, too, as a capital outlet, so overall only 27%, but 47% is our operating budget, and so they are kind of tracking well. Same thing in the sewer. You would notice that overall budget is lower because of the revenues and expenses on the both sides not going through yet. Parking fund. This is the fund where we are still not kind of up to the, or I would say, pre-COVID level. It is transitioning, but it's a slow and steady transition. And I think with the few kind of big developments coming in to the, what do you call, some of the big buildings, some of the other facilities coming in next couple of years, that might help. I think the parking garages revenue go up, the parking meters revenue. But still, yeah, we are kind of, if you see the revenue at 46%, expenses, yeah, there's a lot of restructuring, a lot of savings kind of, you know, affected on the expense side, too. And the fund balance is around $1 million. But obviously, we need a lot more money towards the capital outlet, and either we issue the bonds for that, or we need to have a healthy fund balance in the parking fund to repair the garages and some of the parking lots. Expected to see significant increase in garage revenue with the completion of some of the big residential commercial projects in next couple of years. City council approved $2.3 million for this year for some of the capital improvements. So I just wanted to kind of bring it to the council's attention. ARPA funds, just the big summary, that we were awarded $43 million. First half received in May 2020, second half in June 21. Council approved transfer of, again, just to kind of bring it to, for this budget. Council approved following transfers to the general fund, equipment replacement fund, and parking fund for the current year budget. So far, $28.5 million has been obligated or approved by the city council. And this is like a summary table, you know, showing in which category, how much. And you would see allocated to date in the totals of $28.5 million. Summary major items: second installment of property tax. And again, as I said, we have a $55 million tax levy, 45%. So roughly around 20-plus million dollars, we won't get it. And some of the funds, library fund has a tax levy, too. I mean, they are pretty close to, they could use up their entire fund balance if we don't give them any line of credit. Debt service fund, unless I have a, I transfer the money from other funds, we would need some, yeah, $5 to $6 million to pay off our debt service as of December. So I have, yeah, staff continues to evaluate the cash flow situation, short-term financing for all the funds, general fund, debt service, library, receiving the property tax levy money, line of credit, and other short-term financing options in lieu of the GO bonds, too. So now, I'm exploring line of credit for two things. One is for the CIP projects, for which we haven't issued the bonds or at least discussed the finance and budget, to explore line of credit. And now, with the property tax delay of four to six months, I'm working on that, too, you know, to kind of explore that line of credit from the local banks. Use of ARPA funds as a transfer to general fund parking or equipment replacement for '23 budget, like '22. I mean, we balanced the general fund budget last year with $4.25 million from ARPA to the general fund. What kind of amount we have and what the city council thinks about it, you know, giving more money for '23. And this is the big thing, the personal cost for '23, you know? Driven by union contracts, all the contracts are coming up for renewal as of December. We may not have all the contracts done by that time the city council adopts the budget or by the year end. The staff and compensation analysis done by the Baker Tilly. I think the HR is going to present that, the whole report, to the city council next month. And we don't know what are their recommendations in terms of whether add positions, how many positions, what kind of increase they are recommending, if any, to bring the Evanston wages to the market and all those kind of things. And obviously, personal cost is a big cost in general fund. So we are kind of, yeah, continue to kind of look at those things and even kind of, yeah, seek the direction at a later time from the council, what they think about it. General fund fund balance of December 31st. So I presented, I think the auditors were here about the audit report. We ended the '21 with $17 million operating surplus, bringing the general fund fund balance to $31.4 million. The requirement of two months of operating, you know, budget. So I take $19 million out, and even we are showing use of fund balance, so I take extra million. So there's excess of roughly $10.7 million after we take off the required 16.66%. And some of the things which has already been approved by the council, half a million to the CIP fund for waste transfer stations, settlement fund, CIP fund for some of the maintenance items. We had this discussion where we heard from some of the council members why we have issued the bonds for the maintenance item, which is only three to five or seven years' life. So we are transferring to that CIP instead of issuing the bonds or even like-- Fire truck purchase, $800,000 for that. Back park improvement study, $105,000. Now then, I have included some of the line items. You say, I say TBD, to be determined, and additional cost of the staffing and comp analysis, increased benefit cost, FICA, Medicare, IMR, pension, cost of living. After you bring it to the par with the other communities, how about what kind of increase for next year? And then, use of fund balance in lieu of ARPA funds, yeah. Whether the city council, you know, thinks about that, okay, can we give more ARPA funds to the general fund to kind of help balance that budget for '23? This is the budget calendar. We started working on the calendar. We had a few meetings, except with a couple of department. But we started, this is like our first round of meetings, to seek the input and talk to the department about their budget needs. October 10th, where we will propose the budget and put it on the city website. And since then, council, we are kind of discuss over the council meetings, some of the ward meetings, some of the special meetings, we would have it. And you will see all the dates, you know, November 7th, truth in taxation year, and 22nd, earliest possible budget adoption date. And then finally, January 1, when we start our new fiscal year. Questions?
Thank you very much for this very helpful presentation. Is there any discussion from council? We begin with council, pardon me, council member Reed.
Yes, thank you, Hitesh. It is always, these are some of my favorite--
It is always, these are some of my favorite presentations, and I mean that genuinely to receive, particularly looking at the fact that our city's finances are pretty healthy, and maybe the healthiest they've been in decades, or certainly in at least a decade, yeah. So this is really promising to see. So right now, in our general fund, there's about forty-seven million, correct? And so at the, what do you project will be the general fund balance at the end of the year?
I mean, I think that, again, one thing which I said, that's why I don't put too much, sixty-two percent of the budget revenues is because of the property tax, you know? And obviously, we always have the typical, like last three months, October, November, December, what we call the dry months, when we don't have property tax. But we still have to pay. And particularly during those last three months, we have one extra payroll, which is like three, three and a half million dollars, you know? And one thing which we have talked about in the finance, and some of my peers, some of the revenues are higher in sales tax or whatever, it is because of the inflation too. Once it dies out, and I'm talking about long term, in twenty-three, I don't want to be, like say, okay, take these as a base and kind of budget out there. Because everybody in last couple of months talking about to kind of adjust for inflation. Because if it comes down to a normal three, three and a half, four percent inflation under, you know, which we had for years, one, one and a half, two percent even, right now, because of the nine percent, some of the revenues are booming in some of the utility taxes and all that, because the revenues are higher in that, because of that. So I would make sure. But again, yes, I mean, I'm absolutely positive that we would end this year in the positive, you know, and--
Thirty-five, forty million?
Not, but I would go with, as I said, right now, maybe around five million dollar operating surplus. Because the, one of the reasons we have to see that on the expense side too, in the last three months, like we have some, what do you call, snow events, and that runs into a lot of overtime and all that, besides extra payroll. So that's the thing. Besides that, you have seen in your personal life, increased cost of all the materials, supplies, you know, any construction, or any consulting, or any surveys, you know, like I'm talking about the fuel right now, you know, equipment, all those kind of things. So I want to account for that, you know? And but, and that's why I'm kind of, right now, I would say right around maybe even five million dollars--
Around five million dollar surplus above the six point, sixteen point six-six, okay. Well, that's still encouraging to hear. I mean, we've, the council, the previous council started to take steps to even get to that sixteen point six percent. And so now to see that, you know, because of a whole host of reasons, we're there and we're able to maintain a surplus above that percentage is promising. I have one question. What is personal property replacement? That seemed to be extremely over budget--
Right, and it is, that's why the department sent out a letter to all the communities. And sometimes, yeah, they say we have the system error, we have software update, the Department of Revenue. And so they sent out these things that, okay, this is the money which when they abolish the personal property tax year, they came up with this replacement money. I think way back in nineteen seventy-nine or something, and which is paid by the, like, corporations and all that, it's point seven or one percent of their kind of gross profit or something. But maybe they realized some big banks, bucks sitting there, and so they've sent out a letter that next installment, you would see a big jump. So don't be alarmed with that one. But again, as I said, it's not a base. Our trend is, I think, one and a half to two million dollar every year in PPRD.
Okay. And then, this question is maybe both for you and counsel Price. I had my almost weekly law school lesson with counsel Price. Counselor Price, from your knowledge, is there a such thing as mandatory spending for our general fund?
Well, not per se. I mean, in the background always is the possible property tax objections, which for Evanston is a very low risk, but for other units of government is greater. It's a mathematical formula that if you're over-reserved, the idea in Illinois is you're not allowed to hoard money as a government. You have to only levy for what you need, and then use it accordingly. You're not allowed to stockpile unless you have a plan, some other things. So with those very low risks to Evanston kinds of caveats, the answer is no, there's nothing--
Yeah, there's just, you can't hoard money, and if you do, you have to have a plan for it. So there's no, from your knowledge, mandatory. Hitesh, as our CFO, are you of the understanding that there's a such thing as mandatory spending with our general fund? No?
I'm not aware of that. But again, yeah, I mean, if you are going to direction like, okay, you look in the healthy position of the general fund and the fund balance, I mean, obviously, I would kind of, and not using the word caution, but at least I would like to bring it to your attention about the potential big cost about the person--
We have to balance our values, make sure that we're having enough in reserve, particularly we already have a sixteen point six percent reserve fund to handle those kinds of issues. That's why the council set the goal. But there isn't a such thing as mandatory spending, there's just things that we want to be responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollar and ensure that we have funds available for when there's an emergency, and that's what we have that nice sixteen point six-six percent buffer for. So I just want to highlight that for the council, as, you know, there are a lot of discussions earlier about reparations. And I think, given our healthy city finances, given that there's no such thing as mandatory spending in the general fund, I'm really hoping that in early September, this council consider making a transfer from the general fund reserves to our reparations fund to make sure that our senior citizens are receiving, or the ancestors, the senior citizens who have been approved for reparations, so we're not seeing any more of those folks pass away before they get repaired. And so I just want to flag this here. And then I also want to ask, so, sorry, counsel Price, I'm kind of bringing this on you, so if you don't, I don't expect you to know everything, but, so recently, there's a case with Cook County, in April of this year has decided, and it's still ongoing, but that even units of local government are required to follow the state's transportation lockbox amendment. Are you familiar with that at all?
I have not.
Okay, okay, no problem, no problem. So what I, what I want to flag for us is that there is this case that Cook County was sued over by the Transportation Laborers Union or Association or something along those lines this year, that mandates that all transportation-related funds are spent on transportation-related expenditures. And our city currently does not, I think the way we can most accurately do that is to create an actual fund for transportation-related revenue, whether it's from the parking garage, whether it's from tickets and fines and fees related to transportation, whether it's the wheel tax and other items, all of that should be in its own fund, and we should very clearly track that money to make sure that there is, that we're spending that on transportation-related expenditures. And, you know, I'd really like to see, moving forward, particularly moving into the 2023 fiscal year, that we begin to account for all of our transportation-related revenue and ensure that it is all going to transportation-related items, particularly since our CIP, our capital improvements budget, is one of the most underfunded liabilities that the city has. I mean, is that a correct, other than maybe pension liabilities, you know, our capital improvements budget is woefully underfunded. And a substantial portion of that is in relation to transportation. Is my time coming up?
Your time's up.
Okay. And so a substantial portion of that is related to transportation. I think in order to more fully account for the infrastructure, such as roads, bridges, that we provide parking infrastructure that we provide, we should create this separate fund so we can more accurately account for it. And I think that would also help us achieve some of our environmental goals as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hitesh, I think you mentioned personnel expenses in passing, which are, I would imagine, significantly lower than budget due to all the vacancies. So if we were fully staffed, how much different would these numbers look?
I mean, that's why TBD, because the one thing is, I don't know the results of staffing and comp study, and--
Well, that's, you know, that's moving forward to the future. But if we were fully staffed now, we, you know, would have spent a lot more, significant amount more, on salaries and benefits. How would that change the outlook? I mean--
I mean, the outlook would change, yeah. Like suppose if I take, say that, okay, we want to add twenty-five positions back, you know, it's like a hundred thousand minimum, you know? And so two and a half million there, obviously, when two and a half million, then the pensions and all those things--
Right.
--health insurance and all that. So easily, you can tack on another thirty percent of that. And this is just for the current levels, beside, before taking into account the contract negotiations and what happens with that.
Right. So if we were fully staffed, your, you know, ballpark projection of a five million dollar surplus at the end of the year--
Easily, yeah.
--would be maybe two or three million, two, two and a half million, roughly?
I mean, it depends on how many positions you, right, you know? And we have the fully staffed concept, it kind of deferred from period to period each year. But it's like, I put it like little over a hundred thousand for in one position, you know, on an average, you know, with the, and twenty to thirty percent, you would consider the benefit cost. So easily, yeah, I mean, even you can take hundred-and-twenty-five, you say, times twenty, which is two-fifty, so two and a half million dollar. If you do thirty, it's like three-point-seven-five million dollar. So those are the kind of amounts, without taking into account some of the things which I have said about the comp study.
So looking ahead to next year, I presume we're going to budget for the same number of positions or more than what we have now, knowing that significant number of them are not filled.
Right. And that's the other thing which I mentioned in the somewhere, that last year, we balanced the budget with four-point-two-five million from ARPA to the transfer to general fund. Now, I think, I don't know whether council can commit the same amount of money, I mean, obviously, you make the call, but that's the other thing you have to consider, you know? Otherwise, we will be short by that four-point-two-five million--
And let's also keep in mind that our staff and compensation study is coming back, and we may very well be looking at a situation where we have to increase salaries just to remain competitive in the market, so.
Absolutely. And that's why I think, kind of I said when to counsel member Reed, that, yeah, I don't want to use the word caution, but at least I want to bring it to a, kind of have a discussion, that it would be a some, yeah, sizable amount, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we're doing very well, but we need to understand the full context, you know.
And just for a quick point of clarity, council member Nusma, when you say fully staffed, you're talking about only the budgeted positions, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. I was just going to dovetail on that. I think that's a really important number, given our low staffing this year, that represents a significant surplus. I think generally, the lag pay would be on a normal year, anywhere between one and three million, so it's going to be considerably more than that in addition. So I think it is important that we are provided, you know, to date, where are we in terms of surplus? It doesn't mean this evening, you have to give it, but I think to council member Nusma's point, that's a very important number.
Just point of information, I'd love to see how that lag pay that we're used to compares to this year, and really get an understanding of how many vacancies we, you know, have when compared year over year to previous years. And even, I'd love to see how many vacancies we have compared to other municipalities. Is this a thing that is happening in the municipal governance world, or are we, you know, here alone in a bubble?
Counselor Burns.
And I had made a request, I think at the last council meeting, to have an update that would hopefully respond to some of these questions about what our, you know, our surplus looks like and what some eligible uses of those funds are, or even what staff has planned for the surplus funds that we have, ARPA funds, bond reserves, et cetera. I talked to Sarah before she left, and she said the first meeting in September, we were going to discuss that, is that, is that, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, because a lot of the questions that we've heard today from council member Kelly, Reed, et cetera, that's what, that was the spirit of my request, so hopefully we can--
Right, and particularly, even this--
We can get an update in September.
--one of those worksheet, I mean, ARPA fund is, yeah, obviously, Sarah can track more. Let me just go to the, one of those things which I'm showing as a surplus here, right here. So when you see the TBD, I mean TBD, I mean, because of the personal cost, what we realized in last four to six months, you know, because of the inflation and because of the job market, hard to get there, and not just in one department, every, throughout the city, and all other communities aren't the same, you know, that you have to pay better, you have to pay more like that. The other thing is contract was never in play for last three budgets, because we knew exact amount, that this is going to be the increase with this union, this union, this. Now, that is up for the grab as of December, so that would be one uncertainty. And as I mentioned about the ARPA fund, how much ARPA fund we can get it in twenty-three budget for the general fund, you know? Obviously, one of the things which we always like, to use some money out of general fund surplus to the CIP fund and not issue the bond or not use line of credit, instead of use our own, you know, surpluses.
Yeah, I say hopefully at that meeting, we can, as a council, make some decisions about how we want to use, again, the surplus funds, the remaining ARPA funds and any bond reserve funds, because I think that's been an outstanding question that really, I would imagine, staff is looking for us to provide that direction, and I'm not sure we have. So hopefully in September, that September meeting, we can make some important decisions around this issue.
No one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to council member Kelly with four minutes and thirty seconds left.
With regard to the surplus funds, I agree with, that we need to make decisions. But firstly, and most importantly, is that we have real clarity and disclosure regarding all the surplus that we have. I think that was lacking last time from our budget discussion. So I ask that we, we have a real accounting of the surplus funds, including, you know, transfer tax, everything, you know, staffing, all of that adds up to probably a pretty significant number. So I ask if we can get some real clear numbers of where we stand to date in the various funds with regard to surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else is seeking to speak, so once again, thank you, Mr. Desai, and it's very helpful information, and we look forward to continue conversation on this topic.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Mayor.
This brings us to item SP two. Would someone like to make a motion on item SP two?
I will move, I will move item SP two, resolution sixty-five R twenty-two, a resolution reaffirming the City of Evanston's commitment to the protection of fundamental reproductive healthcare rights.
Second.
Counselor member Reed moves passage of sixty-five dash R dash twenty-two. Counselor Nusma, second. Is there any discussion? Counselor member Reed.
Sure. I suppose, Mayor, or I don't know who brought this forward, but, oh, well, thank you to council member Heticatis for bringing this forward. You know, I, of course, fully support this, but I'd love for us to, you know, in our reaffirmation of our commitment here, I'd love us to really think about what this means in a broader sense. We are, and we are reaffirming our commitment to folks having bodily autonomy and to government not interfering with that fundamental right of bodily autonomy. I will say here that, you know, and essentially, we are agreeing with the holdings in, you know, in Roe and particularly in Casey. And one of, in Casey, which is the nineteen ninety-two case, one of the things that sticks out to me there is it says, "These matters involving the most intimate and personal choices a person may make in a lifetime, choices central to a, to personal dignity and autonomy are central to the liberties protected by the Fourteenth Amendment. At the heart of liberty is the right to define one's own concept of existence, of meaning, of the universe, and the mystery of human life. Beliefs about these matters could not define the attributes of personhood where they were formed under compulsion of the state." And then, you know, with that in mind, I also want to read one of, one of the lines that are, that Justice Alito wrote in his most recent determination in the Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization, which is what is bringing this forward now. And it says, and Justice Alito, who I happen to in this one instance completely agree with, he says, "These attempts to justify abortion through appeals to," or I don't completely agree with it, I, let me take a step back, I partially agree with it in that, he says, "These attempts to justify abortion through appeals to a broader right to autonomy and to define one's concept of existence prove too much," he says. to autonomy and to define one's concept of existence prove too much," he says. I disagree with that. It proves too much. "These criteria at a high level of generality could license fundamental rights to illicit drug use, to prostitution, to," and he says, he cites some cases. "None of these rights have any claim to being deeply rooted in history." And while Evanston has no laws about prostitution, Evanston does have laws about drug use. And Evanston has the power to decriminalize certain controlled substances to allow people to have bodily autonomy when it does not affect anyone else's life. And so I want us to hold consistent our values of bodily autonomy, our values that align with the holding of Casey, and ensure that we are upholding broadly the right to bodily autonomy when it does not impact another human being's life. So I'm in full support of this resolution. I'm a strong supporter of bodily autonomy in a, in a whole host of areas. And, and this is one of them. So thank you for bringing this forward. Have one procedural question. Did this go through the referrals committee?
It did not. It's a special order of business.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I just want to give a few kind of procedural answers to important questions that Councilmember Reed raised. First of all, as was indicated, after the Dobbs decision was rendered, Councilmember Hadekatis immediately thought that the City of Evanston ought to explore what we can do. I stand in strong support of that. And so we worked with Allison Leipzig, our policy coordinator, and in collaboration with some other jurisdictions like the City of Chicago, kind of looked at a laundry list of steps that municipalities can take. And though this is kind of entitled to resolution reaffirming our commitment, the text of the resolution enumerates a series of specific actions, some of which will likely come back before this body at some point. It turns out there are, in light of the changing constitutional environment, not only things that we can do, but things that I think are really, really morally imperative for us to do. And because of that urgency, I offered Councilmember Hadekatis to put this on the agenda as special order of business because there just wasn't time for it to make it through the referrals committee before our five week break. So that's, that's why we're here in this manner. And I think the horrific decision made by the U.S. Supreme Court unfortunately presents an obligation for all of us who have something that we can do to ameliorate the situation to do it as fast as we can.
And.
I'm so sorry. I missed, I'm, I'm only, my field of vision doesn't include the Zoom. I failed to call on Councilmember Hadekatis. So Councilmember Hadekatis?
Thanks. Yeah, I just, thank you, Mayor Biss. Sorry, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Biss. I think you explained it really well. I, this came up, you know, I worked with Allison to put together a referral and as the more we like dug into the nature of the, of what we wanted to accomplish, it grew to be a bigger task. And so we decided to, you know, move forward with the resolution, you know, stating that our continued work towards this. I think it's, you know, our duty to do all we can as a local government to protect people's rights in this manner. And I'm glad that we're moving forward to show our continued work towards this.
Thank you. No one is seeking to speak for the first time. So we'll go back to Councilmember Reed with fifty-five seconds left.
I, I waive my time.
In that case, seeking no one else, seeing no one else seeking to speak, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes and item SP two is, is passed. This brings us to the consent agenda. First of all, items A eighteen and P two did not make it out of committee. So I remove those from the consent agenda. Second of all, Councilmember Reed pointed, flagged that there's a typo on the agenda that I want you all to be aware of before you vote. Item H two is listed in the agendas being for introduction when, when in fact that occurred two weeks ago. So it is for action this evening. Would anyone like to remove anything beyond P two and A eighteen from the consent agenda?
Yes.
H one?
H one?
I would also like to remove and hopefully deal with first RE one, which is the reparations item.
RE one?
And I think the council minutes from July twenty-fifth.
From the twenty-fifth. So CM one, okay. So so far we have CM one, A eighteen, P two, H one, and RE one. Anything else? I'll read it one last time. CM one, A eighteen, P two, H one, and RE one. All right. I would now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda, which includes everything except H one, RE one, CM one, A eighteen, and P two.
Is there a second?
Did we say A eighteen as well?
We did.
Okay. Apologies. A second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the passage for the entirety of the consent agenda save for CM one, A eighteen, P two, H one, RE one. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda saved for those five items is passed. I think in light of the fact that we have several people here to hear RE one, Councilmembers, Councilmember Reed's request is perfectly sensible. So let's begin with item RE one. Would someone like to make a motion on this item?
I move item RE one, I move item RE one, resolution sixty-four R twenty-two, authorizing additional funds to, to the program budget of the local reparations restorative housing program.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of resolution sixty-four dash R dash twenty-two. Councilmember Burns seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yes. Of cour, I, fully in supportive of this, of course, you know, this is, allows, as, as was described, the committee to move forward with dispersing payments to our ancestors as money becomes available. I have a few questions for Tashik or for whoever can answer it, whether it's Tashik or maybe Hitesh. But Tashik, do you know if there's an existing balance within the reparations fund now?
So I can't speak to the balance.
Well, I mean, I'm not asking for a dollar amount, just if there is a, a balance currently.
Yes.
Okay. Is that balance over twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, good. So is when we vote for this, we will be moving forward with providing repair to the next folks in line. And how often are those dispersments, is it in, how often are those dispersments made to the city from the dispensary?
How often is the dis, I, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe I'm using a lot of dispersed words, dispense, disperse. But how often does the city receive sales tax revenue from cannabis sales tax revenue from the dispensaries?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
So Hitesh would have had that information.
Is Hitesh here still or did Hitesh leave? He like, oh, Council Price?
I don't have the, that information about how often they're dispensed. The state of Illinois has not established a pattern, but I have to put in a note of caution about this conversation. So right from the get-go, the Illinois Department of Revenue restricts very heavily who has access to sales information for any business, for sales tax revenues of any kind. It's strictly guarded and it's closely held secret. And there are immense penalties for violating our agreements with the Illinois Department of Revenue about who gets what. On top of those, strict regulations is another layer of regulations about the revenues from cannabis-related businesses. You have one and only one in Evanston. You can do the backdoor math to figure out their revenues if we are not careful about how we talk about this. I've already had the conversation with Tashik. I've already talked to Allison and the clerk's office about FOIA requests for this. They're all going to be denied because we're not going to do anything to allow people to do the backdoor math about what our cannabis dispensaries revenues are, because you can figure it out by the tax numbers. So as you're, ask all the questions you, you want, Councilmember Reed, but I've already talked to Tashik. She may not, she may say, I cannot answer that and that's why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm fully aware of that. It's the former FOIA officer definitely had folks FOI-ing for sales tax information and got to do a deep dive with the Illinois Department of Revenue on that, on that very topic. I, but I do know that also, and I've spoken to Manager Stowe about this, is that there's a form available from the state where municipalities can list folks who are able to review, you know, officials who are able to review that sales tax information, certainly not disclose it, but, and so I am seeking certainly for myself to be added to that list if you think that's possible for a council member to be one of those officials.
It's, IDOR does not recommend it, no.
But if they allow it, we can do it.
But again, the cannabis is different. That's another layer of protection on top of that. So you might get sales tax revenue for the auto dealer down the street.
Right, right.
But the cannabis stuff is another layer of protection.
Yeah. And actually, I'd actually, thank you for, for mentioning that because what I have dealt with in the past is sales tax, generally not cannabis sales tax specifically. So I'd love, you know, whatever conversation you had, I'd love next week for our law school lesson to be about, about the cannabis sales tax and specifically what those layers are that are more restrictive than regular sales tax information.
Well, right. But, and my point, my point is, if you, at twenty-five thousand, I just use simple numbers, right? If, if we awarded the first four awards of twenty-five thousand dollars each and Tashik stood up and said, "We've exhausted our cannabis revenues," then you know you've raised a hundred thousand dollars in revenues, right? Because that's, or you've gotten a hundred thousand dollars of cannabis tax revenues.
In that time period.
Now we know what percentage of the tax comes to Evanston. So we can backdoor and figure out the math of, oh, this is how much business that cannabis dispensary did in Evanston. And we are not supposed to be assisting people with being able to make that determination.
Thank you. And that's, that's extremely helpful because as if we are issuing, you know, as this resolution says, issuing funds as they come in, that could be, you know, potentially, you know, we'd know who's getting the money and when they're getting it. So it could be a backdoor way for people to figure it out in and of itself, which lends itself to us actually putting in city money as soon as possible into this to kind of mix up the funds. So it's not clear whether it's cannabis sales tax revenue or general fund surplus revenue. And that way we can make sure that our ancestors, our seniors, our, you know, these are folks who are over seventy, receiving, they're receiving the money in the most timely fashion without having to worry about, you know, creating a potential liability for the city in disclosing or making information available through the cannabis, that would violate Illinois state law relating to cannabis sales tax revenue disclosure. So, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With set, with six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes and resolution sixty-four dash R dash twenty-two is passed. Thanks very much to our guests for, for sticking around and for your work on this important issue. This brings us now to item CM one. Would someone care to make a motion on item CM one?
I will move approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Is there?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of item CM one. Councilmember Burns seconds. Is there any discussion?
I think there's an amendment from.
Oh, I got it. In that case, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Oh, yes, aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
And Councilmember Revel?
I abstain.
With five voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the minutes are approved. And this brings us now to item H one. Let's see. Councilmember Reed, would you like to make a motion on item H one?
Yes. I move, I move that we table, and this is with, after, with conversation with Councilmember Revel, that we table item H one ordinance ninety, nineteen oh twenty-two, omitting portions of the city code nine five twenty, noises prohibited, and city code eight three one A, enumeration of particular noises. And I move that we table that to.
After the first of the year.
After the, they certain, January, the first meeting in January.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that item H one is tabled until the first meeting of two thousand twenty-three. Mark your calendars. Councilmember Burns seconds. Is there any discussion? Incredibly enough, there is. Councilmember Newsma?
We've been working on this so long, we, we need even more time?
Yeah, it's, excuse me, may I?
Councilmember Revel?
The noise ordinance needs one additional amendment to take care of restaurants that have patios where they play amplified music. But it turns out that our zoning code doesn't provide for outdoor patios. So first we have to have the land use commission do a zoning code change, something or other about outdoor patios, and then provide some kind of condition, special use process or whatever for restaurants that have patios that want to play, play amplified music. So it's a, it's going to take a little while.
Nothing is ever as simple as it seems. All right.
Thank you.
Someone should get that cross stitched onto a pillow. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to table item H one until the first meeting of two thousand twenty-three?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and this item is tabled until the first city council meeting of two thousand twenty-three. This concludes the consent agenda and brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Reed?
I'm first today. I just want to only think, two things. One, of course, ward meeting is always the last Thursday of the month at six PM via, we're, I'm going to work with city staff to make sure we can do this at the Levy Senior Center. And, you know, so looking forward to that. And if Manager Stowe is available, I'd love to have Manager Stowe at that meeting. We'll figure that out separately. This is my first time raising it. I just thought about that. So we'll, we'll see about that. As well as we'll discuss a whole host of city issues. And then also I remembered my statement for the resolution that Councilmember Hadekatis put forward and, you know, just the importance of municipal govern, of governments, period, but municipal government, just governments, period, going back and doing the work of cleaning up the code and making sure that there aren't laws on the books that are outdated and, and lend themselves to supporting holdings like that in the Dobbs v. Jackson case. Because in that case, the Supreme Court looked back at laws dating back to the eighteen hundreds and the early nineteen hundreds to justify controlling women's bodies in a way that men's bodies are not. And I would hope that the City of Evanston can ensure that we are not setting precedent in the future that. not setting precedent in the future that some off-kilter Supreme Court in the future, or potentially even this one, would look to and to justify inequitable enforcement of laws or rules, and so looking forward to continuing the work that, that I have done on that in our code and working with my colleagues on that. That is all I have.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Ward meeting on the 18th, it'll be virtual at 7:00 o'clock, and then I'm also having office hours on the 20th, that's Saturday morning, from 9:00 till 10:30. That will be on Hardtree Street. I will be also picking up trash from the local box stores there, so come help pick up some trash and talk to me on the 20th and the 18th, or both. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Newsma?
No report.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Ravel?
Just real briefly, I have a special ward meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM to talk about the Poplar Avenue Improvement Project.
That concludes call of the wards. Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and the establishment of reserves or settlement of claims. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1, C11, and C12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the city council resolve itself into an executive session. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:34 PM, the city council resolves itself into an executive session to begin immediately in the councilmember library.